On the broadcast right now.
Okay.
And we are recording.
All right.
And. Yeah, go ahead, Matt.
How about that 20-page director's report?
We're starting seven.
Twenty.
I think we'll start the meeting at this time since we have more than a quorum.
Okay.
Thank everyone for coming. And at this time, we can say the pledge of allegiance to the flag of our country. We'll all rise and repeat the pledge. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag.
Of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. I think I'll take attendance. I'll just read off everybody's name and you can say here, assume you're here. Alice Chaslow.
Here.
Cecilia.
Here.
Amanda.
Here.
Althea.
Here.
Lucinda. Shanti.
Here.
All right, I'm sure Lucinda's on her way, so.
No, Lucinda's on the call. I can see her name.
It's muted.
Oh. Thank you for sharing. I didn't realize that. And Lucinda, you should unmute if that's possible unless. Karen, can you help her with that?
I can try. I.
I'm muting.
Lucinda, can you speak?
I'm speaking.
Awesome, okay.
Can you hear us?
Oh, yeah, I can hear you.
Okay, good.
Are you on a computer or a phone?
She's muted again.
Okay.
Matt, we also have an attendee, Merla and George Morrison.
Oh, good.
Yeah?
Very nice. Greetings to the Morrisons. So the first order of business on our agenda tonight is the budget hearing. And Karen, I will turn over the proceedings to you at this time if you're so ready.
Yep, let me just bring up my document. So our budget, as it was discussed and approved in a preliminary form by the Board of Trustees, falls within the tax cap, which is 1.91%. The total amount of the budget excluding other income is $4,163,175 minus projected income of $116,900 for, no, I'm sorry, got that missed out. Let me do it again. Redo. The total budget is $4,280,750 minus an income projected of $116,900. Total amount to be raised by tax levy, $4,163,175. This amount, let me go back to my other sheet here. Just give me one sec. You had asked that I put together the tax levies or the, you know, the tax rates as they would occur under this particular budget, which I did. And for the town of Austin, the tax rate per 1,000 of assessed value would be $1.15, or I'm sorry, $1.15. And the increase in the percentage rate for residents in the town of Austin, and that also includes the village of Austin and village of Briar Cliff that's in the town of Austin, that would be an actual increase of 0.99%, which would mean that a home with an assessed value of $447,000 in the town of Austin, including the village of Austin and the village of Briar Cliff, would see an annual increase of $4.46. Town of Newcastle, sorry, I'm having trouble with my computer here. Town of Newcastle would see an estimated tax increase of 1.26%. And town of Yorktown, an estimated tax increase of 5.95%. And I have a call in to see why that rate is so different. I know that all of the municipalities have different overall taxable properties and values, and so that's why that's generally different, but I want to get that from the horse's mouth.
Okay. Any questions or comments?
Should I see if our guests have any questions?
Sure.
All right, let's see. Let me see if I can unmute them. Merla or George, can you hear me?
You, but can you hear us?
Well, I can hear you.
Hello, everybody.
Hi.
I'm Merla and George.
Let's ask you this question. With the new rates, are you doing anything to change or improve or to add to your facility in any way or personnel?
Yeah.
Or is it just a flat, normal program?
So I can tell you what we're doing. We are increasing our book budget more than we normally do because right now we are focusing very heavily on collection development, both for our print books and our eBooks, both in adults and children's. And so that's a real focus that we've been pushing for and which is reflected in this particular budget proposal. The other thing that we, the other significant thing, is that we have been experiencing some pretty difficult technological problems with WLS. We were hit by lots of malware outages and things like that last year. And so we are installing, and some of this is actually grant funded, but some of which we need to find money for as well. We are installing a secondary network so that we can have some redundancy and so that we can avoid the situation that we were in last year when we were actually not able to provide service for, you know, two, two long periods of time. So those, those are the two big focuses. The rest of the budget is sustaining what we normally do, you know, with, with regular, regular increases in, in services, like, you know, programs and stuff like that. We try to, with our programming budget, we try to reflect what we are currently spending, and we try to sustain that, and this budget reflects that as well.
So the repairs, services and alterations budget, that went up. Those increases are due to what?
I'd have to go back and look. Let me get to my budget document, just one sec.
So George and Merla, you guys are both well?
Yes.
Yes, we are.
Thank you.
Is everybody at the library okay?
Yes. So far. So far.
Good.
I have another question. Are you able to maintain the same staff? I mean, the same number?
Yes. Yes. As we have it budgeted currently, yes. Let me get to my repairs.
And by the way, Merla, many of them are working remote, like, all of our staff are working remotely. I would assume.
Yeah.
Right. But, but including some part-time employees.
Right. The repairs reflect mainly the HVAC repairs that we find we have to do. Bob generally looks at what we've been doing, you know, for instance, this year, and tries to project out what we're going to need to do last year. So that includes things like well pump replacements, physical, physical repairs that have to be done to the HVAC system. That's the big nut in that particular budget line.
Have you gotten an increase in the number of people coming for your Spanish language program?
I missed the last part of what you said, George.
You were wondering whether you had an increase in people coming for your Spanish language program.
For the Spanish language classes, you mean?
Yes.
Yes. We have been, yes, the, the numbers of people who were attending those classes when they were in person had been increasing. And now that we're doing those remotely, we're seeing some new students come in as well. We just started up, Guillermo has been doing his classes remotely. He added a couple of classes back while we're working from home. And Diana just started up the conversation class, I think, two weeks ago, and she's had some more students, you know, who weren't coming to the library when she was offering it in person.
Good, thank you.
Sure, you're welcome.
And just a reminder, the voting will be done by mail, and I believe the votes have to be returned by June 9.
5:00 P.M.
Right? Any other questions or comments regarding the budget?
When are those cards going to be sent out?
The access to Alice?
I believe in the next, like, I think towards the end of next week, it's going to go out.
I haven't lost it. Good.
No, the library, the school district is compiling. In fact, on the meeting today, the Monday meeting, they were saying that they should be, they're, they're close to getting it out. It's going to go out, the mailing is going to go out to 20,000 registered voters. Because of the bulk permit, it'll, you know, we're gonna, obviously, it's not going to be a dollar a piece. And people who don't return their ballot, we won't get charged for that postage, right?
Okay.
But the library is going to bear half the cost of the mailing because the mailing is for both budgets, the library budget and the school budget and the, and the board elections.
Thank you. Okay.
Karen, do we have a dollar amount on that yet?
No, we've asked and they'll get it to us.
Is there even a ballpark number?
Well, 9,500 for the, I asked that question last week.
Oh, that's right, the postage.
It's, it's around 9,500. My impression is to get the mailing together and printed and stuffed through a bulk mailing company. But I don't know what the postage is going to be, but I, I'm thinking, you know, around $18,000 probably.
I was thinking 20, okay.
Yeah, between 18 and 20 is, I think, what we have to be planning for.
Okay.
Am I muted again? I'm sorry? I said, am I unmuted? Yes, you are. When, when they come back, how are they going to be processed? That you'd have to ask the district clerk.
They're going to, they're going to be counting, hands counting them.
Hand counted. Yes.
Any other questions or comments on the budget? Okay, then we'll move on to the next item, which is the approval of the prior meeting minutes. And the motion is to accept the minutes of the April 20th, 2020 regular meeting of the Board of Trustees. Everyone who was here at this meeting was present at that previous one. At this time, I'll entertain the motion to accept those minutes.
So moved.
In a second. And all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any objections or extensions? If being none, it carries. At this time.
Welcome, you have two screens.
Couldn't hear you.
Welcome, you have two screens.
Oh, it's, for convenience, I put my phone on because I wanted to see all of the documents on my laptop. And then I put my laptop on so I could see all the people. Because I can't see all the people on the phone.
It's not your clone, okay.
I, I didn't think you'd notice.
That's a good idea.
The next item is actually public comment. Karen, if we could extend to Merla and George if they had any other subjects or items they wanted to bring to the board's attention at this time.
Okay, let me just get them unmuted here. Merla and George, I am trying to unmute you.
Muted me.
Okay, you should be able to talk.
I am talking.
You're talking.
No, I don't have anything else that I wanted to bring.
No, nothing.
You answered.
Nothing that would impact on the budget at the present time.
We just think the library's fantastic.
Yes, we're both former trustees of the library as you know, and have taken a very keen interest in what you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for joining us, too. Thank you.
I thought this was such a cool idea. To do the Zoom thing.
Yes.
We've been going to a lot of, a lot of webinars.
Yes.
And you two stay well.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, we're going to leave.
Okay.
Bye, Merla. Bye, Morrisons.
Bye.
Bye.
So the next item is the director's report and the personnel report. And I'm sure you've all noticed the extent of the activities and the information provided. I don't want to steal the director's thunder, so Karen, I'll let you take over.
Okay, so I will keep it brief. I have a couple of additions to my director's report because, as you know, things happen pretty quickly around here, even though things also seem to be standing still, which is a bizarre way of looking at things. I'm going to be, unfortunately, the one who is accepting our Arts Award from Arts Westchester. They're going to do a filmed event instead of a live event, so I'll do my best to represent the library, but it's unfortunate because I had really wanted some of you to be there, some of my staff to be there, but it's just not happening. I'm gonna put, I'm gonna put off talking about the reentry committee for right now just because it's a big one. I spoke to Sandy Galiff about our construction grant for the security cameras. The deadline was looming June 30th, but she was able to pull some strings. And what we think is going to happen is that the governor is going to do two executive orders extending the deadline until the legislature can get back in session and provide an extra year in the legislation for that particular grant. I think what they're going to do is add a year to each of the grants because, you know, it's a rolling process. There are new grants coming every year, so they're going to be extending those out. And I did confirm with Carrie, of course, nothing is, is 100% until we have it on a piece of paper, but the grant that we were awarded for our boiler, which was the $411,000, was included in last year's budget. So that money is there and has been, what you mean, accounted for, you know, it's there for us.
It's allocated.
Yes, allocated, thank you. So unless I hear otherwise, that sounds good. And let me just see. The boiler installation is going along nicely. Maybe Molly, you could speak to that briefly?
Yes, it's going along very well. They've hit all of their targets. Currently, our only holdup is waiting for Con Edison, and we have no control over that. The work is very clean and impressive, and they've been very good workmates on site. So I'm very pleased for it despite COVID, that project went very smoothly.
Yeah, thank you, Molly. I wanted to mention, I said it to you in the report, that Grant Schneider from Performance Development Strategies is conducting a survey of our staff to gauge alignment of the staff with the library's mission. And it seems like an odd time to do that, but I guess, I think it's actually a perfect time to do that because we're all rethinking everything. I took this survey myself and it, it made me think, oh, oh, I have to attend to that. Ooh, I have to attend to that. So I think it's, it'll be really good to get the results. He closed out the survey, I believe, today, so he should have the results to me soon. As a matter of fact, I have a voicemail from him, so I assume that that's what he's calling me about. All of the fantastic and amazing programs and services that our staff are providing while we are closed are outlined in the various department reports. And I have to say, I'm really proud of them all. Everybody is doing a great job. They're going outside of their various boxes and trying new things, and it's really quite exciting. And I, I think everybody is pretty adamant that we need to continue programming in this way, even when we can program in the old way again, in the in-person way. In addition, I think we're going to have to program in this way because I think large groups of people in the library for programs is going to be something that we're going to take a while to get back to. That being said, I wanted to get back to our reentry plans, so.
Karen, can I just, in the, in the meeting today, that the Ray Sanchez meeting, they were talking about, I guess they're anticipating the library's going to open soon.
Tomorrow?
And I, yeah. And.
Was I supposed to be at that meeting because I got a notice that it was canceled?
Yes, but it was, it doesn't matter.
Okay.
Because Ray wasn't there anyway today.
Oh, okay.
But what, what came up was that they wanted to know about the plans of reentry, and I said we had worked on our pandemic plan.
Right.
And the other thing that we spoke about is census.
Yes.
And that's why I sent an email to you to talk to them because they're hoping that maybe the library can do some outreach. We can't share our list with them, but they're hoping that maybe we can do some outreach to our patrons.
Yes, we've already spoken about having the staff, we're having the staff make calls anyway, to our patrons in various, in various lists. So it, as part of that outreach, we've been talking about adding a piece about the census to that, a little reminder. And Corolla, well, I think you saw on the email, had offered some training for our staff. So my department has our gathering up who can attend that training, and I'll get that list to Rebecca at Neighbor's Link so that they can do that. Mallory is working on putting a little blurb in each of the e-blasts that go out. She just needed, couldn't find the Austin accounts logo, which I know is somewhere in the mess that is my computer, but they're putting that out. You know, she's finding that, and then they'll get, get that going. So those are some of the things that we're thinking about, but our census team in the library is going to be meeting again to sort of regroup and see where we are and see what we need to do.
And they had said, as of this morning, the village has a 56.6% return rate, the town has a 61.6% return rate, and the national average is 59.5%. So we're actually doing pretty well. The schools are doing extensive outreach, as is Neighbor's Link.
Yes.
So they had just asked that the library could help with that, too.
Yes. I wanted to talk a little bit about our reentry planning and activities. I gave you in my report a breakdown of all of the different teams and what we're working on. One of the frustrations that I've had is in getting information from the various leaders of our profession and from the state about where libraries fall in the different phased reopenings. And unfortunately, I have to say, we've gotten some wrong information from our library system, which I found out just recently. One of the things that we could start to do relatively soon, as soon as we can set it up safely and get staff back into our building in very small numbers safely, which, you know, includes planning and scheduling and things like that, is a curbside pickup service. We were told by our system that we could not do that at all, that it was a violation of all sorts of different things. And I found, first of all, there are libraries who are doing it in Westchester. And I checked with Craig Olivo. He said, there's absolutely no reason why you can't. The staff, we are considered a governmental agency, and so our staff can be in the building at the rate of 50% if we want. It's not the 100% stay-at-home that we were led to believe, you know, 100% besides the custodial staff. So that was nice to hear. I'd wish that that had been relayed to us at a different time. I checked with our insurance company to make sure, because one of the things that we were told was that it would be against our insurance and that we would be liable and we'd be personally liable, all these scary things. And I checked with Joseph Price today, who was our agent, and he said, absolutely not. The insurance covers things like this. You just have to make sure you put in safety protocols that we've been planning for anyway. Molly's been working really hard on that. So that's something that I, I would like to start up sooner rather than later. I do anticipate pushback from the union, but I think we are in, I think we have a strong case to make that this is something that we can do, and personally, I think we should do it. We have a budget vote coming up, and we have a very large percent of, percentage of our population who don't have the kinds of technology resources that would allow them to enjoy the services that we're putting together. So I wanted to run that by you and see what you think about that.
There were multiple points that you made, Karen, so I'm not exactly sure which one you're referencing. There's the one of bringing the staff back into the library, and then there's the other one about the making accessible, making, darn, I want to say.
Curbside?
curbside.
Curbside, thank you.
Yes. So basically, I'd like to know if the board would be supportive of me starting up curbside pickup at some point in the near future, once we have everything in place to follow safety protocols, et cetera.
I think it's a good idea. But I, but I do want to ask the question, Alice, you were, you were, I'm not aware of what meeting you were at when you were talking about the meeting with Ray, but my question to you is, why is the school district, why does the school district want the library to be open?
Just so you understand, there's a, a meeting every Monday from 12 to 1. The superintendent convenes it with key community leaders, including the library, the town and village leaders, the rec department, and various municipal, the Open Door, Lindsay Farrell from the Open Door, and Beth Sniffin from the PTA, Lisa Ridley from the school board, like, a lot of key leaders. And Ray actually was not on the call today, but the village people, you know, YMCA, were interested in when we were going to start that curbside pickup.
I think a part of the problem is.
I don't know why.
No, I think a part of the problem is that County Executive Latimer, on his Friday call to the municipalities, and I'm sure the village was on that call, I know the town was on that call, he said that libraries could open immediately or on May 28th.
Okay, well.
It's like a game of telephone. He said that without any conversations with anybody from the libraries or the state, so.
So there's your answer. It was George.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just didn't know. I didn't know what, you know, where it came from. Okay.
But interestingly, there's a real misunderstanding because at the beginning of the pandemic, at one of the earlier meetings, they were like assuming the library was going to stay open when everything else was closed. And we were like, no. So for some reason, there's this perception that the library needs to be there all the time.
And, you know, that's a, just a second. All right, I'm sorry. It's like some Minecraft battle going on in the other room. Now I lost my train of thought. Work from home, it's fun.
Enjoying the sound effect, so it's okay.
Yeah, it's great.
Talking about George Latimer.
George Latimer. Oh, yeah, well, you know, on the bright, on the flip side of that, it's really nice that our community sees the library as essential and, and that they feel that we should stay open, even if we can't stay open. That's all I was going to say. Can I?
Going back to the curbside, how does, if you were to start that now, how does that work out with your phase-in plans?
So.
First question, and the second question is, how is Austin in terms of the virus and is the village, I mean, it means more contact among people and everything like that.
So I'll answer the second question first. Alice, you can talk about the virus, but I can, what I can say about curbside is that with the exception of the few staff who would be working with each other in the building, and as you know, we currently do have buildings and ground staff working in the building, so that's not different, it's just who, you know, the difference is who. Curbside can, is probably the safest thing that we could do because we would set it up so that there's no contact between the staff and the patrons. The risk potentially would be on the patron end, but our staff would be making sure that they were following the proper safety protocols, that they're not passing the virus on any of the books. Right now, the way we're treating our books is we will be quarantining them for a period of 72 hours once they're returned. All of the materials that are currently in the building have been sitting in the Um, all of the materials that are currently in the building have been sitting in the building for weeks and weeks and weeks. So there's, those, those materials are perfectly fine. But what we were thinking about doing was having patrons, you know, there would be a phone call that happened when they came to the library. Maria's actually looking into an app sort of thing that automated a little bit more and make it easier on us and on the patrons. But they could call into the building, they can say, okay, you know, I'm Mary Jones, I'm picking up these books, I'm here, and we can say, you know, maybe we, maybe we number the parking spaces and we say, okay, please park in space number two and please pop your trunk. And then we would come out, put the items in the trunk and walk away. We would not take anything from them. If they had book returns, it would have to go into the bin. We would check everything out to them, just going into their name, uh, not more, not using a library card.
That's exactly how shop, right? I do the curbside pickup.
Right.
And you park in a spot, you text to a number, they come out, they bring your groceries. So it's very similar. In terms of the virus, I didn't, um, the, the numbers, the cases are declining significantly. We've gone from a fifty percent positive rate, almost a fifty percent positive rate, down to less than twenty-five percent positive rate now. And um, the availability of swabs has increased tremendously. So now Lindsay basically said, anybody who wants to be tested just needs to call nine four one one two six three. Someone will call you back, tell you when to come, and you can come. You just say, I feel I was exposed, or I'm not feeling well, and anyone can go in and get a test. And they have the antibody tests as well. So, but the um, incidence of new virus cases is dropping. It's, it significantly is my understanding.
But here's the problem, you cannot get tested if you are not presenting of any kind of symptoms.
I hear you, and that was true before, but she said that is not the case now.
That's not true, because I've called a number of places and they're like, and they're still saying, you must have either been exposed, have symptoms, think you have a cough, whatever. But if you're just somebody that says, I don't have any symptoms, I just want to test, they're saying, no, not, not yet.
Okay. And I hear you, but what I heard today on the phone call, Lindsay said, you just need to call and you need to say, I was exposed, or I'm not feeling well, and they will give you an appointment.
So for someone.
Okay, but if you, if you weren't exposed and you're, you feel fine, you can't be tested.
Or you should just say you think you were exposed.
You just say, I think I was exposed, and they'll test you.
No, that's all right.
Well, I, I mean, that's a direct quote.
Or maybe that person will get an antibody test.
Shanti, go finish, I didn't hear you.
Did you hear the, the person this morning that said that, uh, the head of HSS, that African Americans are the people that, they're the reason why the count is the way it is, the deaths are the way it is. Did you hear about that?
No, I didn't. I didn't see any news today at all. I'm sorry.
That happened. And so, I'm not calling anybody and telling them anything that's other than what it is.
Okay. Well.
And, and where, and how would, first of all, Open Door already has a, has a issue with African Americans in this community, so I doubt, even if they say that, they're gonna do that. But if, wherever, any, anywhere else, CVS, the county, uh, Doug, uh, wherever, they're still saying that you cannot be tested. So you're saying that there is a fifty percent rate that went to twenty-five percent. But if you're not testing people that are asymptomatic, then how do you really know how many people have it?
I, you're totally right. I, I agree with you. And it was my understanding, based on what she said today, that if you call nine four one one two six three and you say that you want to be tested, that you will be able to get the test. I have not called and asked for a test. I encourage you to, because I would like to know if you are able to be tested.
Okay, moving on.
Okay, I mean, if you, if you want the test, I encourage you to try. And because I'll be upset if you're told no.
Okay. Karen, I have a quick question on the bullet points in your report that list all of the different committee work that's being done for the reentry. Is that the kind of thing that you might consider useful to add to the um, the policy? The pandemic policy, because it would show an example of, an exhibit of the way you organize to attack this. Not that there's anything lacking in the pandemic policy, but I thought an illustration of what was being done might be useful.
I think in the pandemic policy, as it currently is, we require that a pandemic team is formed. And this is pretty much that. We can certainly add example, I would rather add examples from the, the reentry meeting itself, the notes that Mallory types up for us as an example, because hers are a lot more comprehensive and, and helpful, I think. Mine is just a real broad summary. I want to get back to one of Amanda's questions that I didn't answer, and that's how does curbside, starting curbside fit into the pandemic policy? It does in phase one of reentry, but when we get to the item of the policy committee, there is one change in wording that I want to make, which I'll, I'll say at the time, to correct, to correct the information about what triggers going into phase one. Because that's based on the incorrect information that I had at the time, and I'd like to put in something that's a little bit more accurate. And I have an, you know, I have an idea of, of what I'd like to do. Can I, um, if there, are there any more questions on curbside? Because I have another service that we're thinking of that I wanted to run by you.
I have a quick question.
Of course.
Uh, you're worried about CSEA pushing back on delivering that service?
Yes.
Have any of the other libraries had those objections?
Terry Town is a union shop, I believe, and they are providing curbside service. Shrub Oak is a union shop and they are providing curbside service. I don't think either of them are CSEA. But it's, it's pretty clear from what Craig Olivo sent me, and we talked it through, that we can ask staff to come back into the building as long as we have a plan for health screening, keeping things clean, keeping things clean between shifts, and um, setting expectations about safety activities. And we've been, we have those things in the works right now. Would we be ready to start it tomorrow? Absolutely not. We have to continue to work on it. I have to have a conversation with the union president. I wanted to have this conversation with you tonight before I did that.
I have to plug in my laptop, excuse me.
Thank you. Sure. Um, any other questions on curbside?
No, I think that the consensus is it makes sense if we proceed cautiously and we get all the parties involved to, to accept that it's the right way to go.
Right. The other thing.
The patron is gonna um, ask for specific books, or are we just gonna give out like random sets of books for families and stuff?
No, the patron would ask for specific books and they can do it directly from the catalog, like they normally place holds. It would only capture holds for our patrons from our collection. So in other words, our patron, I mean, they can certainly place a hold on a White Plains book, but that book is not gonna come until delivery picks, starts back up again. Um, and we.
So no interlibrary loan?
No interlibrary loan. And we are leaning towards, I'm leaning towards doing it just for our patrons because um, I know Chappaqua is gonna be doing it for everybody. My concern is, I really don't want to instigate something that's gonna make people be traveling around the county. I, I kind of want to keep this local and, and consolidated. I also don't know what the pent up demand is, and you know, we have to make sure that we can manage it.
Karen, with the curbside, you mentioned how you would have people pop their trunk and you would put their books in the back of the trunk. What, if somebody doesn't have a car, if we have a number of patrons who are walkers, how do you get books to them then?
So one of the things we talked about was having them contact us when they get to the library. We could have a table set up outside and we could ask them to stand away from the table, we'll put the thing on the table, and they can take from the table, something like that.
That's what the Flores Rubrums does.
Yeah.
You call and you check in and you say, here, and they put it on the table.
Right, right.
And that's what they do at the Village Bookstore in Pleasantville, too.
Yeah. I think there are a lot of, I mean, a lot of people are doing curbside and there's a lot of good um, best practices out there that have already been tested. And so that puts us in a good place when we're putting ours together. The other piece that I wanted to introduce, and we did discuss it um, at the policy committee, but not in any great detail, was the possibility of home delivery for people. And I did speak with Ray Sanchez about possibly using their bookmobile to do this, and he seemed very um, accepting of that or excited about that. This idea was actually, it's been going around from time to time, but I have to say, the person on my staff who's most excited about that, this, is Scott Craven, who I think wants to drive the book truck.
No.
Yeah. Um, John Hawkins, who is our homebound.
He's gonna have to fight the grounds guy for that.
That's right, you know it else.
It's his, uh, it's his ride now.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll see. We'll see if we can wrest it from them. But, but I did check with our insurance company and he said, um, we, you know, obviously there would have to be an arrangement with the school district and an arrangement with the insurance, but what we would do is put in additional insured um, on, for the school district for the use of that. The other way of doing delivery is using our personal vehicles. Um, there's a little bit more liability in that for the individual employees, so I kind of want to stay away from that if we can, although that is an option. And another option is um, having volunteer, trying to find volunteers who would go around and deliver. Which I think is my least favorite option.
Yeah, not a good idea.
As we go along.
Yeah.
So that's a, that's another possibility that's, needs a little bit more coordination and thought. So those are, oh, go ahead.
It's, nothing is um, how should I say, the, the reality is that I, I think many of us were surprised at just how much work is being done exhibited by the director's report. I think that if, if less work was done and by appearances, it just seemed like you're doing the best you could, who, we wouldn't have anything to judge it by, we wouldn't know. But having seen this, I think you're setting the standard. And obviously, I can't talk for any of the libraries, but I think you're setting the standard for the way a library should react and.
Thank you. It's a team, it is a team effort for sure. I'm, I'm so lucky to have the team that I work with. They're all very thoughtful and, and hardworking and interested in what's best for the community and for the library. So that's a good thing.
It was also nice that Suzie, in her report, actually had um, some of the folks.
Yes.
Say their experience working from home, because I think, like, we knew for the department heads and stuff, like, you know, of course, but for some of the other folks, we didn't really know.
Yeah.
Karen, can I ask a quick question about the ALA survey that you said you completed?
Yes.
Um, do you have a copy of that you could share with us, or can you just tell us?
I don't have a copy of it and I couldn't tell you off the top of my head because I've got to tell you, I've filled out about six surveys in the past three weeks.
Oh.
Yeah, for different things, not, not just ALA.
But related to the library, into your library services?
Yeah.
Oh, because that's not in the report.
I, I just, I, I just pushed those through and move on.
No, but I'm really interested because um, in terms of the questions and stuff, it will be fun, it will be interesting to see the final report, but I just wondered what you had to say.
Yeah, I, I couldn't tell you off the top of my head what I had to say. Sorry.
Next item on the.
Oh, no, I'm not done. I'm not done. One more thing, one more very small thing. Well, it's actually a very big thing, but it's also very last minute. So the IMLS, which is the Institute of Museum and Library Services, it's a federal agency. They are offering grants, um, they're offering fifteen million dollars worth of grants nationally for um, libraries to apply for, for COVID response-related activities. You can get a grant, we can write for a grant from between twenty-five thousand and five hundred thousand dollars. It's a long shot because we are not a giant city library. But I would like to write a grant for, um, I would like to try for this grant program. I've spoken with Mallory, who is our writer, Allison for the technology piece, and I'll tell you what we're thinking about. Diana for the adult services and outreach piece. I mentioned it to Alice as well, because I think, um, well, Alice is my go-to person for grant writing, because we, we've had experience together with that. And I spoke to the school district, um, because I, I would want them to be a part of it. The thing that we're, that we would like to write for is a workforce development librarian to work at the library. It would be a full-time position for a period of two years, one hundred percent grant funded, if we get the grant. And their charge would be to provide um, employment-related services for members of the public. So help with job searching, resume writing, coaching, training on various things related to employment and job searching.
That's a great idea.
Now, another piece to this is I would like it to also have a youth component. And part of it would be, if we get the grant, I, we would like to create um, three sort of rotating positions called technology pages, which would be meant for high school students. And their job would be to help patrons with technology challenges. Because we know a lot of the people who come to the library looking for jobs have basic technology problems. And we would like them to be able to provide that service. It would also give some teenagers a, a job at the library so they get to experience what it's like working at the library, which is kind of cool. And in addition, we would want the librarian to provide programming about careers and jobs for teenagers as well as for adults. We would also beef up our technology so that we had um, a lot of this training, at first especially, would have to happen remotely. So we would need people to be able to access it. So we would, um, we're, we're thinking about writing in some technology that we could lend to people, like a Chromebook and a hotspot, and they can borrow it for the class, or borrow it for their interview, or, you know, that kind of thing. So the dead, the deadline is June twelfth. So, so it's um, a little bit of a stretch. But I just wanted to run it by you and make sure, I mean, you could tell me, Karen, you're absolutely nuts, please don't do this.
Go for it.
Who said what?
Lucinda said, go for it. The RFP is only a five-page narrative with like twenty-seven questions. It's ridiculous.
I'm trying to listen to Shanti. Say that again, Shanti.
Did you say that it would be a librarian that would, huh?
Yes.
Did you say that it would be a librarian that had that position?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Um, they used to have it, they used to have something similar, it wasn't exactly this, at Mayo Pack Library, like ten years ago, when I was working, or more years ago actually now, when I was working up in Putnam County. They had a librarian who was um, specially trained in, in this. And she was able to help people with job searches. She also had a, her focus too, she had a secondary focus, which was literacy. But her position was paid for at the time by like a workforce development pot of money that came from the state. So I've always sort of wanted to replicate that, and when I saw this grant, I thought it would be interesting. One of the things that we have going for us, and I hate to put it this way, but there are unemployed, very skilled librarians out there at this time, who I think we could use as a pool. Uh, that's not to say it's gonna be easy to find somebody with those skills, and civil service is always a huge challenge.
Any other questions? Karen, I hope you don't really think you need our permission.
I just want to make sure you're, you're okay with it and we'll, and, and that you understand that it's a long shot, and we may not finish it anyway, June twelfth.
Yeah, well, good luck.
Thank you.
The.
The school's gonna help with it, Karen?
Nancy Arroyo is gonna be on the, um, is gonna be on a call. Nancy Arroyo is going to be on the, is going to be on a call with me and Diana this coming week. She's going to help us with the, the community stats and things like that.
Right, because she's got a lot of that stuff written, the community conditions.
Yep.
Okay.
Well, the next item is the operating budget and revenue report. Karen, I didn't see anything of note, was there anything that we needed to pay attention to?
No, we're doing very well with our budget this year. You know, we saved a lot of money at the beginning of the year in our personnel lines because we had so many open positions and that's a good thing. What Bob is doing with the HVAC project is he is paying out of the operating funds right now, knowing that we can pull from the capital funds if we need to. And then, of course, when the grant comes in, it'll replenish the capital funds.
That'll be nice.
Yes.
Well, no other questions, we'll move on to the committee reports, under the President's Report. I will briefly bring you up to date that I attended remotely the last WLS meeting where they went over their audit. And there was some angst on the part of the new members, the new trustees, to find out that the WLS has over $600,000 in unassigned funds. And they didn't understand what that was for and the leadership of the WLS said that that particular meeting was not the time nor the place to discuss it.
Wow.
The WLS is really a closed organization. The libraries are not privy to how they get, decide their budgets. We're not given an opportunity to review them or approve them. We don't know who they hire, we don't know what their jobs are, we're not given a copy of their bylaws and they are very happy with the way they operate. I suggested many different things to them and they don't see any need to respond because everything's running so smoothly. The influence of the executive director is astonishing. The, the impact that the trustees have on the district is shockingly nonexistent. They don't even go, none of the, the reps go out to their assigned libraries. So it's a very interesting organization and I still haven't cracked that code. I'd like to learn more about it and get some transparency. I don't know if we will. There was an interesting note that came up because the White Plains Library, being a municipal library, had their budget cut by the city. So they had to cut services, they had to cut hours. So in a conversation subsequent to that knowledge, I asked Karen what would happen in Austinang if we didn't get our tax money? Even though we've received the money through the fall for this year, if the circumstances are such that people don't pay their taxes, so the school won't get revenue and the library won't get revenue. And the answer Karen got in her research was basically that the town would be on the hook for providing our budget and they would have to raise funds through bonds. They issued tax anticipation notes, which would be based on the anticipation of collecting tax. So we wanted to double-check on that and make sure that we were covered and there is a process that's never been used historically to cover the library and/or the schools if the taxes aren't collected. Other than that, there's nothing new and exciting from me. The next item on our agenda is policy and bylaws and the first reading of the security camera policy and the draft pandemic policy and plan. And I hope you all had a chance to look at that, it was an eight-page document and very well-written. And I'll turn it over to Karen or Amanda if you'd like to bring up the security camera and pandemic policy.
I'll, I'll just start Karen, then I'm going to turn it over to you very quickly. But we, I think in our last board meeting, we said we wanted to return to any policies that we had been discussing as a committee and I listed quite a few. And we looked at them briefly and realized that so many of them, it's hard to continue a discussion with them at this time because of the pandemic. And we put them aside except for the security camera policy, which fits, it doesn't matter about the pandemic or any of the phases of the reentry or reopening, that one still can be implemented as you see it in your packet now. If everybody with the first reading is comfortable with it. We felt that this one is ready to go. And then with the pandemic policy, I, it's, it was, I really, Karen, it's a terrific piece of, a plan. That I think all of us should be proud of for the work that you and all the committees and everybody-
Thank you. It's a group effort, as you well know.
Yes.
I just want to say two things about the pandemic policy. As you know, this policy has to be changeable and flexible because there's a lot we don't know. So I, I'm asking the board to sort of approve it in a different way tonight. I don't know if this is the, the right terminology, but almost sort of approve, because it's also unfinished, I need to add the, the close-down procedures or policies. I'd like to, for you to sort of approve it provisionally, which would allow us to continue to work on it, but also to work under it. Because frankly, I mean, we are doing these things already and it's good to have a policy framework on which to hang these various decisions that we're making. The one change that I referenced before that I would like you to consider is, and I just brought it up here on my computer, is the wording that's in Phase 1 that triggers going into Phase 1. Previously, I had it worded to say this phase, and this is how it's worded in the document that you have, this phase will start when the regulating government agency lifts any order that requires 100% of nonessential workers in the library sector or similar sectors to work from home or a similar order is given. And I'd like to change that to read something like, "This phase will start when, when non-b buildings and ground staff can be in the building to work according to government regulations and rules." That opens it up, it doesn't tie it to a percentage, in part because for us right now, that percentage is wrong, but also because in future pandemics, let's hope not, but in future pandemics, different metrics may be used by the various government agencies to say who can be in the building and when and what percentages, et cetera.
That seems reasonable.
Yes, it does.
What page is that on?
I just realized I didn't paginate the thing, which was my bad, but it's on, let's see if I can figure that out. It's on page 5.
On page 5.
Pandemic policy does have pages.
Does it?
Yeah.
It's at the bottom.
Mine doesn't. Oh, maybe Kathy put them on for you.
That's what I was trying to find, I was looking on page 1 and 2 and I couldn't find where you were reading.
It's on page 5 at the bottom, under Phase 1.
Okay.
Now, the end of Phase 1, the last bullet point is in red, "The frequent communication to the public continues."
Yes.
That seems to be a duplicate of the one, two bullet points above it.
Yeah.
Oh, it is, I'm sorry.
I was wondering if you might want to change the one in red perhaps to something along the lines of the, not just the frequency of the communication, but the methods of communication will be achieved by multiple technologies or something. So you're being sure to say that maybe you're frequently sending out emails, but maybe phone calls or mailing or something else is appropriate. And if you say you utilize multiple methods of communication, I think you cover both approaches.
Sure, so I can take, I'll take out that red bullet because I think somebody might have, I might have misunderstood somebody saying that it wasn't there and I see that it is there, but maybe we add to it the frequent communication, "Using various methods such as print, email, phone calls, social media continues," "with the public continues."
Sounds good.
I can add that in there and that's under Phase 1.
Well, doesn't that bullet, isn't that duplicated in all the phases?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would, I would put it, I would use the same language in all the phases.
Yeah.
What I would suggest, Karen, is that we go ahead and pass it and then you can do an addendum that can also be passed, rather than passing it provisionally. Just go ahead and pass it. And then if you have some changes later, you can just make an addendum.
Yeah, we can do it however you, you guys think is best.
Is, if we, if this is a policy, does that mean it is going to be posted online?
Um, yes, yeah, we don't, we tend to keep our, our internal policies internal and our public policies public, but I think that this is public enough that it should go online.
Yeah.
That makes sense. So you think we should change the resolution or just, you can pass it and there's nothing that says you can't put it into effect?
Yeah.
I think we'll leave the wording of Resolution 51 the way it is and we'll get to that in just a minute. Are there any other questions or comments on either of the policies at this time? Okay. And the Finance Committee is the next item. I don't know if there are any other issues beyond what we've already discussed regarding the finances. I don't believe there are any. And if there aren't none, we'll move on to Buildings and Grounds and we did have an update in that area. Was there anything else that we didn't cover on Buildings and Grounds? I think perhaps not. So in that case, we'll move on to the resolutions. And the resolution that comes up first is number 49. We had tabled it, it's the approval of exemption from local library taxes for village water properties. Alice, correct me if I'm wrong, but is it accurate to say that the other two parties involved, is it the school, had tabled it at this time?
Nobody's going for it because nobody trusts it.
Okay.
Kind of like what Shanti, what you had said when we last discussed it, is my understanding.
Okay, so taking that into consideration, I would like to bring the resolution up for a vote and ask you to be prepared to vote as you see fit. I'll entertain a motion to accept Resolution 49 for a vote at this time in a second. There being none, we, we won't be able to vote. Okay. Then we-
I second it.
Okay, we have it.
All right, who's first, I didn't catch it.
Cecilia?
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so all in favor of Resolution 49, please indicate by saying aye. All opposed, please indicate by saying no.
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 And any abstentions at this time or objections? There being none, it fails. Resolution 50, the security camera policy first reading. I'll entertain a motion to accept Resolution 50 in a second.
I'll move first.
And ask for a vote, all in favor of Resolution 50, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any nays, any abstentions or objections, there being none, it carries. And Resolution 51, the pandemic policy and plan draft, resolve that the trustees approve the policy and plan draft pending final approval. I'll entertain a motion to accept in a second.
Can, can I just say that we should-
You have to tell me again. Who said first and who said second?
Let Lucinda ask a question then.
Yeah, my question is why do we have to approve a draft? Why can't we just approve it as written? And if Karen wants to modify it or whatever, that's fine, but I don't think we should approve a draft. I think we should approve the pandemic policy.
Well-
That's what I said earlier.
Yes, then, and the, the reality is that we're obligated to have a, a public reading and then vote on it. So we can have the vote the way it's set up and Karen can still implement it, knowing that the sentiment of the board is to adopt the plan.
So we'll adopt the first reading and then at the next meeting, we'll pass it.
And it doesn't stop her from employing the information.
Yeah.
Exactly. So entertain a motion to accept in a second for Resolution 51 at this time.
So-
In a second. And all in favor of the pandemic policy and plan draft, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any objections or any abstentions, there being none, that carries as well. And we're off to old business, we took care of the first item. Long-range strategic plan has to be tabled at this time. I wanted to make a comment that Karen and Kathy, putting the documents for this, this meeting, for tonight's meeting online, was just such a convenience. And there are folks who are not board members, who are members of the public and our patrons, who found that very enlightening and felt that it, it's something that we should consider doing going forward. I don't know if it's something that's a burden or we can continue to put on the, the appropriate documents on, online.
No burden and we are just moving forward doing it.
That'd be great.
I know the school board actually does everything digitally.
Yeah.
That'd be great.
I remember us doing this years ago, we used to put all of our attachments online, but.
Now, we do have to go into exec and I would like to give anybody a chance if there were any other comments or items they wanted to bring to our attention at this time.
You know, I just had another quick question about the teams because I was very interested in how those were developed and I'm assuming that probably it came out of, you know, the standard departments and what needed to be done. But I thought that would be very interesting to explain or explore a little bit further. Who, who came up with the idea of having specific teams?
So Allison Robbins has been helping me facilitate these meetings. She's very, very organized and she's very good at organizing groups of people. So when she and I originally talked, we knew we needed the department heads all to be there, but we also knew there was going to be a lot of work to do and we would need input from people other than the department heads. So she had suggested breaking our work into teams and then asking the department heads to identify people, first of all, identify people within their department who should be on the greater reentry team. So they join us for all of our big committee meetings. We have several other people who are not department heads at those meetings. And then for the work with the teams, each team chair shows people who would be beneficial to be on that team. So that's sort of how we did it.
Yeah. It seemed to me that some of these teams are so useful, maybe they could have a life beyond our current situation.
That's the idea, yeah.
Great, great. Thank you.
It's a lot of teams, Karen.
It's a lot of work.
Yeah, I bet. Well, the COVID, I mean, this is, I, I was actually speaking with Ray this afternoon, Ray Sanchez, and he said like in this new normal, like, there's no need for snow days anymore, right? Like you can slip right into digital learning.
Yeah.
Or a snow day and stuff and so normal is different.
Kids are crying everywhere.
I know.
About not getting snow days.
I know that, I know that. I mean, you know, they don't know for sure, but normal is going to be different. And I suspect when we look at some of our engagement, hopefully we're engaging people that we've never engaged before and there are opportunities for us to engage more people who perhaps don't schlep themselves to the library.
That's absolutely right, we're finding, we're finding that in our programs, it's interesting.
And I would imagine our concerts, if we streamed them live, more people could participate.
Yeah.
Things like that. So, you know, it's a whole new world out there.
Yeah, it is. Molly apologized, I think she lost her connection, she just texted me. I see her there again.
Well, we're about to go into exec, I will entertain a motion to-
Matt, Matt, Matt.
Yes.
May I say something? Thursday night, the Candidates' Virtual Forum, 7:00 PM. I will post it on our website, how to join it, all right?
Okay.
Will you send us the link too, Kathy?
Yes, okay, I'll send, okay.
Thanks Kathy.
Okay.
And in fact, you'll, you'll put it out in our, our library eBlast, Karen, too, right?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks Kathy.
Guys, I've been sitting in this wooden chair all day, so I'm like-
I'm having the same problem.
Yeah.
All right.
So I'll entertain a motion to leave the meeting and begin the executive session. In a second.
Second.
And we are now in exec, so Karen, do I have to ask you to stop recording?
Bye. Oh, yes, I thank you for reminding me.
Okay.
Okay. Okay.